It is Monday, May 3rd. It is 6:01 PM. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. I declare this meeting open. At this point in the meeting, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the Zoom Remote Meeting Instructions.
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? I'll have a roll call vote stillings.
As long as I.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes, treasury warrant, payroll. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of treasury warrant 21-W22 and payroll 21-PW22.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote stillings.
As long as I.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages.
Clark.
Clark, aye.
And Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of meeting minutes from the 20th of April and the 30th of April of this year.
Still move.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? I believe, Skip, you may have to withdraw your second. I'm not sure that you were. I think you missed one of those meetings because it might have conflicted with conservation.
Yes, that's right, I did.
Put me down for a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote stillings.
As long as I.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Clark.
We're accused.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries four yeas, one recusal. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. Is anyone in the crowd here for public comment? Jeff, I see your hand up.
If I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I'd like to speak as a member of the 300th Anniversary Committee, real quick.
Okay.
That's okay. At our last meeting, so Jeff Stillings, Three Lord Lane, at our last meeting of the 300th Anniversary Committee, we were talking about some fundraising ideas for the events, of course, it's going to be next year. But if we wanted to get some funds onboard, we need to begin this fall. But we do not want to overlap with the 4th of July. In fact, we have a joint session with the 4th of July Committee on Wednesday night. So one of the ideas that we tossed around was the idea of having Friday night concerts, family concerts on the Common. Every Friday night in August, that'll give us, because there's four Fridays in this August. That would give us an opportunity to have some open mic type bands, local talent, who would donate towards the 300th. And our fundraising would be through permits of food trucks that play with the band and potentially a pouring license to do draft beer on there with the proceeds to go to the 300th in there. But before we get into seeing if there's any interest with the artists or the food truck vendors, we need to check the posture of the town, whether they would be amenable to us holding such events Friday night, three hours, bring a chair, bring a blanket, bring a car on the Common. So what we would look for, the 300th would look for is first of all, permission to use the upper common right in front of Community Hall. Your feasibility on the potential of a pouring license, feasibility of allowing food trucks to circle around the Common in there and to charge a modest permit fee as we did for the festival in there with the proceeds to go to the 300th Anniversary in there. So just looking for posture, whether this is feasible, if the 300th can start soliciting for talent on there. Of course, you know, everything's tentative to, you know, the status of the COVID and and whatnot. The biggest fee that I would foresee would be porta-potties, but I would work with the vendor for the 4th of July to see what they do. They have a couple of porta-potties. So I wanted to throw that out there. I'd just like to get some feedback before we invest much time. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I think if you look at the state's new guidelines, a lot of the restrictions are lifted or changed in August. I know Scott is also on the call. I don't anticipate any of the crowds being much larger than what's going to be allowed. If it's the pleasure of the board, if, I don't think anybody else from that committee's on. I think that we could combine this as an item that we can discuss under the 4th of July item below as a board. If the board's amenable to it, because I think these things go hand in hand. But right off the bat, Jeff, we can talk about it then, but I think conceptually, I'm not sure what the rest of the board would say, but I think that it sounds like a pretty feasible plan, as long as the board has signs off on it. So that being said, we'll just move that to the 4th of July item under new business, and we'll discuss it then. But thank you, Jeff, for bringing that to us.
Thanks for hearing it.
Anyone else for public comment? I don't see anybody. If anybody in the chat room wants to join public comment, please use the raise hand feature and we'll be alerted to you wanting to speak. Okay, under old business, we have acceptance of gifts and grants policy. This has been on the agenda now. I was under the impression that we accepted this wrong.
Yeah, do you want to do my update first? Which is before any agenda?
Well, I didn't see anything under the update, but yeah, go ahead.
A variety of things, that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, so first, we put out a request for information for people who wanted to propose developing a what I guess I would call a grow facility in Rutland where they can grow marijuana. Cultivation is, I guess, the best term for it. We received one applicant or one company to put in for it, a company called Mass Tree Holdings. Gave out what I think is probably, in the five years I've been doing this, probably one of the best present, one of the best proposals that I've seen in a long time in terms of putting together the information in a really good way. The evaluation team that we pretty much established in the past, or you guys actually established before I came in, police chief, fire chief, Rich, Seth, and David, David and myself all reviewed the proposal. I think it's, like I said, it's exceptional. I sent an award letter to them today, letting them know that they would be the ones heading it, depending upon a successful negotiation of a host agreement. It's my plan to have that host agreement reviewed by them. Frankly, we're going to use the one that was already developed by KP Law for the last one we had. I'm going to rework that up over the next couple of days, get that to the potential vendor here and then try to have it ready for the Board of Selectmen from two weeks from now for the next Selectmen's Day. The good thing about those proposals, obviously, is the revenue generated by it. The retail establishment, you remember, we get 3%, and then we get an additional 3% of taxes that the state gives us back. This one is 3%, but this is, we could be talking about a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, at least for five years for this particular proposal. So for five years, I think it will help us in getting some revenue in from the town. And we'll have to see what the state legislature does in terms of, do they extend and make it five more years after that? How are they going to deal with the fees involved in this? I would hope that they continue the same process they have now, but that's, so far legislature hasn't taken up that issue in a clear, concise way. In terms of a budget update, I've been working, obviously, with the Finance Committee for quite some time. And the Finance Committee's been working hard to put together a budget. Frankly, we did our best to work as a team in putting these together. We are close to completing and getting a final budget. You may be aware, you may not be aware, that the School Committee is going to be voting Wednesday night and some revised education numbers based upon, I believe, the House, the House has voted a new budget, and those numbers are a little higher than the actual budget. So the school administration is working with the School Committee and they're expecting to meet Wednesday night. And hopefully after that, we can get the final numbers for the four segments of the school budget for the for our school district. So once we have that, we can lock on those numbers. Either Tuesday, the Finance Committee right now is concerned, they have a two meeting scheduled for Tuesday, but they don't have the heavy agenda. So I know that the Finance Chair is currently talking to Finance Board members about maybe, instead of having two short meetings, having one longer meeting on Thursday night. So that's to be determined. The only other option that we're going to be discussing, CIPC has put in some requests for some capital items, and there's going to be some discussion about that on Thursday night. Those are really the, in my mind, really the two major things that we have to complete for the budget. It's sad that the School Committee is frankly waiting until Wednesday night because it doesn't give us much time to kind of finalize and get the documents out. Bet today made copies of the, 350 copies of the warrant to be handed out. In the past, the, sometimes the motions document was given to the public, sometimes it wasn't. I'm not sure what the advantage of making 350 copies of the motions document, those are really generally used by the Finance Committee, maybe a selectman or somebody that proposes a particular article, and then we plug numbers. I'm not sure they need that. The Finance Director and I were talking today, Finance Director, Finance Chair today, and I were talking about what other documents should be handed out at town meeting. And one of the things that the Finance Committee feels strongly about is the beginning of my budget books, I gave you a sort of a summary budget of each line item. It's an Excel spreadsheet format. She would like to give out that spreadsheet where it's going to show the Finance Committee recommended budget, the potential reductions if the override doesn't pass in that summary budget and give it out to citizens that night as well. And then the third document, and I know we're a little bit heavy on documentation, but we want to give people the information. You may have seen the impact statement that the, all the department heads and the Finance Committee worked together to develop. That impact statement is on the, on our website and on Facebook and all those good places. But so that they have along with that budget document, the impact of the reductions would be handed out too. So when the Finance Committee is explaining the different options, they can look and see what that impact of that potential line item is cut. So that is being worked out, and we're going to get all that ready for town meeting. Right now, the warrant article, or the, I'm sorry, the motions document is with our law firm, just for their review to make sure that it's clean. So I'm expecting, hopefully tomorrow, to get that back and finish that. In terms of COVID, right now, approximately 47% of the Rutland population has got at least their first shot. As you may be aware, they're right now 16 and over is the age group, so pretty much everybody but little kids are eligible to get the COVID shot. And talking to Rich and numerous conversations with Scott, they're extremely pleased with the way that's going. They have enough shots to keep moving forward. The people requesting vaccinations are going down. It seems that they're having a more of a difficult time getting people to come into the vaccinations now. But they still are moving forward with that. About four to five weeks from now, they'll be doing the five, I'm sorry, they'll be doing 12 to, I guess, 16 is the next week that they'll be doing. And then eventually, they're going down to doing five and six, five and six and above. So what you're seeing is, you know, the ages are dropping as more and more people are getting vaccinated. Currently, we have about 11 or 12 cases, which, as you know, is very small. So we're going in a great direction in terms of the number of cases. So we feel good, and I looked at the state website again today. Clearly, the cases are going down dramatically, hospitalizations are going down, deaths are going down. But it's interesting to see the largest group now getting COVID is between 20 and 40-year-old people, who some who haven't gotten the vaccine yet. And while they're, you know, still, I think, it's statewide, they're still about 800, 700 in some cases, almost 800 cases. It's really between 20 and 40-year-olds for the cases they're going now because they haven't had the vaccinations. And the good thing, you can take any good out of this, is those are the people less risky in terms of death or anything. The illness tends not to be as serious as it would be in somebody 50 or 60 and over. So that is good news. And that's all I have in terms of an update, Mr. Chairman. I see Jeff's hand out on that character.
First, I want to make sure the RFI comes to the board, the application for that cultivation. We got to treat it the same way we treated the retail, and that came to the board. So when that's wrapped up, please bring that to us. It's my understanding that the School Committee, the subcommittee that's voting on Wednesday for the budget, the budget could be substantially different, and it's not based on state numbers. What I'm hearing is that there's a potential proposed reduction for the Town of Rutland by, you know, six figures potentially. So I'm hearing different information come out of there. I hate that they're doing this three days before town meeting because it creates confusion as to what's being presented. And so I would just ask that we please keep an eye on that, because this is our last meeting prior to town meeting. And I just don't think the community wants to be blindsided if the school district is not providing all of the information in a timely fashion.
Well, frankly, you know, myself and Karen, and Karen's on the call here now, both were emailing back and forth with Dan Diddy about just that. It's, you know, we need the numbers as soon as possible. It's very difficult to do this just a couple of days before a town meeting. So we understand your concern. The question kind of posed back is, the school administration has power. They have to bring everything through the School Committee, and that's when they're meeting Wednesday night. So I agree with you. We're going to be looking at that closely Thursday morning. We'll be looking at what the School Committee did and immediately working with Dan to make those final judgments. I did talk to Dan about it today, and I told Dan to call Karen today. I know that occurred. So we're all kind of prepped and ready to go once we know those numbers, but.
I mean, that's great, but like, there's a Wednesday night every week, not just the week before town meeting. So it would have been great if they figured this out, you know, two, three months ago, but fair enough. Jeff and then Leah.
Thank you, and I'll through the chair, just a couple of points. I think moving forward, I think would be best practice before the town issues any award, especially on items that could be potentially contentious as a cultivation in the town. I think the board needs visibility on that, if not the head nod before we issue anything. Moving forward on the agenda, if maybe on the TA updates, if we just have some bullet points of some of the items that are going to be discussed, people could be prepared of anything like that could be contentious, like a marijuana grow or, I mean, the COVID has been routine. I think we expect something on that. But my question is, and through the chair, is where, what's the location of this proposed cultivation?
So let me first start with the first question. Jeff, the first question is, the award is me letting them know that they were the selected bidder by the committee. That's a requirement for me under procurement officer, under state law, we're required to offer to the lowest bidder that meets the requirement. So that's, that's something I have to do under state procurement law. Now, the real issue here with the Board of Selectmen gets involved is actually in the host agreement. If the host agreement isn't approved by the Board of Selectmen, it doesn't move forward. I'd be happy to provide you with the books to, you know, the actual proposals that came in. But truthfully, under state law, you guys really, difficult for you to debate that, as long as it meets the requirements of the RFP we set out. But you can clearly decide not to support the host agreement and not move the project forward. It's pretty much the same process we did with the retail one. I don't remember if I said, I guess, I think I heard you guys say you saw the retail one. So the one that they gave us is a very nice book kind of thing. I'll round those books up to from all the different evaluation team members and see that each of you get a copy of the proposal so you can look at it.
There's only one bidder?
Let's add the, yeah, there's only one bidder.
Okay. Clear too that we did, this did come up, you had brought it to the board that you were going to issue the RFI and the company had, or when there was interest expressed in the project.
And the host agreement itself will look exactly like the host agreement you already approved for the prior, the prior one, it's already been approved for the cultivation. So I have that contract, the police chief was trying to send it over to me in word form. So next couple of days, beginning next week, I'm going to be just redrafting basically the same agreement with just some tailoring. Like this, this company is donating $5,000 to the Police Department, so I got to put that in. But it's going to be a host agreement that effectively we've already approved, just a new company. And frankly, I think a way more qualified company than what you guys have voted for in the past in terms of the local person. It's just a, it's just a very professional team in this case has put it together. So I think you could be really satisfied with it, but I'll make sure you guys get those books. You'll probably just have to stop into the office to pick them up, okay? What was your second question, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Where exactly in our town do they propose growing the devil's lettuce?
Yep, so you know the Blair's Plaza right down the road on Main Street? The plaza on the right-hand side of the road going down from town hall, that plaza? That, in the back of that pro, in that plaza is actually zoned industrial, and there's almost like a warehouse there. It's going to be going in there. It's about, let's say it's about 15,000 square feet. That's where the growing facility is going to go, right there. Now, it's not retail, so it's not going to have much public going to it, just workers. And part of the requirement is to hire at least 25% of the workers. It has to be Rutland and Rutland residents.
Okay, got it. Leah.
Thank you. I just had a comment as far as a comment about whether or not to provide the motions at town meeting. And I think in the past, we've done that because a lot of folks like to see the actual dollar amounts. I think in the warrant, we just say raise and appropriate a sum of money. And then in the motions is where we actually have that dollar amount written. So that's the, in my mind, I know when I attended town meeting as a resident, I appreciated having those numbers and being able to reference the numbers. I probably worked more off the motions than I did the warrants, but that's just some feedback.
You're right on target. It's been going both ways. Sometimes you guys, they give out motions, sometimes they didn't. The only reason I'm a little bit hesitant is because they're already getting three other documents. I'm a little afraid they're going to get that whole big budget summary, they're going to get the warrant, they're going to get the impact. And I just think, you know, we're feeding them kind of too much all at once. And that was the only reason I thought maybe that that motion document, because it's exactly the same as the warrant, except for the dollar numbers that is going to be read in the motion. I can do all four. I have no objection to it. It's just a lot of information to give the voters and expect them to try to, you know, understand it in, you know, 10 minutes or while the meeting is going on. I'm happy to do it either way. I just, like you say, it's a lot of stuff to kind of understand in that short period of time.
Okay, somebody else have any questions for Ron about the Town of Rutland Select? Okay. We will move on to old business, acceptance of gifts and grants policy. Again, this has been on the agenda for a little bit. I know that we had talked about this before. I thought we had moved on this to accept it. Is that not the case, Ron?
Yeah, we just got accepted, you know, I can remember, and again, I have to go back before I left on vacation for the week, but I remember some questions, and I tried to review it in light of what I remembered some of those questions to be. One of the things here is that I remember a question being, what if there's some other group that wants to accept donations that we haven't thought about it or dealt with here? Because we really hit the kind of key groups here, the Board of Selectmen, accepting gifts, Community Center, Library, 4th of July Committee. We know those are established. Any other gift to the town of not one of these groups would, in fact, still be allowed. It's just that that gift would be given directly to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen could still accept that gift. It would just be under the name of the Board of Selectmen. Now, if we do get another group that's a continuous thing where we're getting donations on a regular basis, it's very easy for us to, at any Selectmen's meeting, to modify and add a group, if we want to add a group. So that's pretty easy, because this is by law, this is just a policy. So if you guys feel, if we see some issues with this going forward, we can very easily amend this to, to change that as a policy item. As you said, also in deals with grants, and again, we can, all the town and place can apply for grants to accept it. All grants have to be approved and voted on by the Board of Selectmen in terms of acceptance of that grant. That gives us protection against some grant that might cost us a bunch of money in the future. We don't want to be locked in by that grant, so that gives you that ability as well. The treasure collector will be in charge of accepting that money, putting it into the right account, and working with that group to make sure that we understand how much money is coming into that account and how much money is being spent. I think it, you know, I think it's a pretty basic policy that will make it easier. I put in the amounts, the dollar amounts, so that every time the Anniversary Committee or 4th of July Committee gets a $50 donation, $70 donation, they don't have to come to this board. But if it's a large donation over $1,000, I really believe that the Board of Selectmen would be a good check on that large of a donation. That's why I said it is a $1,000 threshold.
Can we have questions?
I have. Thank you. I guess you kind of touched on it a little bit, Ron, and I was coming back at it from a different perspective as far as where the first four or the first six, where you, I guess it's the first five, actually, where you list out the different groups that kind of are eligible to obtain potential. There could be more, I understand that. But I was wondering, the 4th of July or the 300th Anniversary Committee is probably only going to be in existence for, through the 300th. So do we want to explicitly include them, or do we want to say something about boards or commissions or something that committees that have had gift accounts set up for or something, just so we're not, it needs to be on everybody's radar all the time, almost every year that we need to update this or not?
Well, I would say to leave it so that we don't have to have the Board of Selectmen accept all these small donations. But what we do is at the end of the 300th Anniversary Committee, once we close it out, it'll be just a motion at a Selectmen's level to remove that, and then I could just adjust the policy. Because again, it's a policy that a bylaw says is very, very easy to adjust.
Any further discussion from the board, questions?
I think, sorry Mitch, if I may.
Go ahead.
One other thing, I think it's kind of not implicit, but or that it's obviously a little bit of feedback from impacted department heads. If the board is presented with a large donation or something, that then it's, the board's not necessarily the ones responsible for carrying that out, but there needs to be that communication between whatever department head or board or commission or whatever is going to be the oversight to make sure that it's something that they feel they can manage. I'm not thinking so much of a dollar amount, but more of an actual like physical gift or something.
I would suspect that if there's a large donation, it's going to come from the department's heads, who's going to come to me and say, XYZ wants to donate this to the library, or XYZ wants to donate to the town.
Just happened at the senior center.
Yeah.
You know, so I think, we, I think that that's alleviated by, I mean, that's really part of Ron's job, is to kind of manage those projects and to make sure the infrastructure is in place to support those department heads. So I think as long as there's that checks and balance system. Like I think specifically, something, the Community Center project is a project as well as a financial donation. So that's something that's going to require some management, but I know Ron's been working on that with Nancy. So something like that, I can certainly see the concern, but that's why we hire Ron.
And most of the nations are going to come back from the organization that the money is going to. Most people want to donate money, they don't come to Board of Selectmen to go to, oh, I want to give money to the library, I want to give money to the 4th of July Committee. So I think they'll come, most will come back that way. Would it be something exceptional that might come to the Selectmen, something that's really big that people might want to bring forward? Another good example of that is the cemetery donation, right? That came through this, through the Historical Commission, I think, and then kicked us back that way. So that's another good example of that.
Society.
Historical society.
The private entity.
Right. Thank you for clarifying.
That's right, too.
Yeah, that wasn't a town entity.
All right, so any further discussion about the gifts and grants?
Sorry, it looks like Scott might have his hand up. I can't tell for sure, though. I don't know if you want to acknowledge the public or not. I don't.
Scott Gilroy? Scott, do you have your hand up?
Nope, I'm on a phone, so I don't think I could put my hand up.
That's my fault, sorry. I had my mouse there and it looked like a hand. Totally my fault. Sorry, everyone.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks, Ron. Next, we have the.
Oh, we need a motion to accept that policy.
Need to accept the policy, or can we just?
I would, I would think, I would feel better, I mean, it could be a town minister's policy, but I would feel better if this is a Board of Selectmen's policy.
I'll make the motion to accept the Gibson Grants Policy as projected.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote stillings.
As long as I.
Nichols.
I.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye. Thanks, Ron, for working on it.
No problem.
Clark.
Clark, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Item number 125, Mr. Chairman. I reviewed that. I know there's discussion, we did it in the past. I reviewed the minutes of the April 5th meeting, and that was already done. We did waive the fee, so there's no need to do 125 again. The only other comment before we go to new business is that I have taken, I've got scheduled two weeks of the three weeks vacation that I'm entitled to prior to June 30th. I don't know if I have to ask the board or not, but I'd like to extend that and use that vacation in July instead of trying to rush it just with town meeting and budget and everything. I haven't taken that other week. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to extend that third week I'm supposed to take and take it in July instead of by June 30th.
Is it July 4th? Through the chair?
It's, I've taken a week that is going to run from. It's, I've taken a week that is gonna run uh from uh end of June through July. I think what I probably will do is extend that vacation another week to use that. To use that last week I have in this year, cuz the way they did it when when they did my contract is they. Prorated it for three quarters of a year because it wasn't a full year contract, had me start on July one a new, a new year for vacation, everything. So I probably would take that vacation, send you guys a note extending that vacation and. In June, another week and and I'll get rid of that week, so I'm, cuz I'm asking to carry it over for a couple of weeks, that's all. I could rush and take it right away if you want, but I'd just like to get through budget in this town meeting and get everything cleaned up and. Take it after all this stuff's over.
Through the chair, I just, I just uh asked that somebody who's gonna be around uh. Be placed as acting, because that's our busiest week, and there's gonna be a lot of town functions on town property. And it's a, I think it's a Sunday, so it's a weekend fourth, so they're gonna have a lot of events on the common.
You gotta get to that that portion, portion of the meeting.
Yeah, I, yeah, well.
You might be disappointed.
This is Jeremy, I'm thinking and and it's later discussion, but.
Right, so.
Do we need board approval for that, or can, is it okay?
I think.
Everybody else, just to know for me, I need a board approval.
I I think we've done this before, um this has obviously been an extended year. I know you've been working uh pretty closely with the budget and trying to get everything caught up, um so I can appreciate that uh. I have no conceptual problem with extending the vacation a week so that Ron can take what's owed to him contractually. Um given the fact that everybody's been doing what they've been doing all year. Um I think the week he was out, uh Becky did a fine job standing in his interim, uh more than a fine job. In fact, Ron, I wouldn't be taking too much vacation, you might find yourself a place to.
There you go. Vacation one of those weeks, so it may be Nick again doing it this time, but.
Okay, so it's up to to you to to kind of delineate that chain.
Um it sounds like the fourth conversation is upcoming, that was gonna be my question, but also um. Depending on what happens at town meeting with um the budget and everything and the the election with the override and all of that. I just questioned because uh the timing of everything, if we need, if we're going into Ju- July first without a balanced budget. Or we need to rush for an additional town meeting or um anything of that nature, that's my only other kind of back of the mind thought.
Right, so so let me kind of comment on that, so. I've got vacation scheduled, and I I hope we're not anywhere near close to that when we're doing a budget, but. Uh I'm going to Nashville at the end of June into July, and my intention was. To be back here for the fourth of July, cuz truthfully, I wanted to be here as part of the fourth of July event anyway. I guess if you make the motion, I I think we're gonna discuss if the fourth of July thing should go forward or not for a little while.
We just take fourth of July out of order right now, Ron, and then we can take your vacation request.
Yeah, okay, that that's fine, I was just gonna say, just like, alright, yeah, just let's do that.
Alright, so I switch to item one thirty-four, if nobody has any objections, um so fourth of July, uh this is something that was brought to us. Uh as some of you know, uh many of the other communities in central Massachusetts. Are canceling their fireworks parades and activities surrounding fourth of July. Um that inherently presents a problem. To us as we have one of the more prominent fourth of July celebrations every year in central Massachusetts. In that you could potentially have more than thirty thousand people uh here for an event. Uh and that kind of creates a logistical issue, uh both with public safety. Uh as well as with the ongoing pandemic that we are now nearing the end of. So um it was suggested, uh I know that there have been conversations between our board of health and our fire chief. Um about again postponing or canceling this year's fourth of July celebration. Uh due to an abundance of caution for that reason, uh the fear is not that. Our residents have been extremely responsible during this pandemic. It's more, you're gonna be having a lot of communities that may not have fared as well, that have canceled activities, and you could have folks flooding in. Uh from all over the state, uh and that could cause our rates to go up. So that's the discussion point, I just wanted to brief everybody and bring everyone up to speed. The board has to make a decision um whether or not to hold the event or to cancel the event.
So, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Ron.
I I do wanna comment, cuz cuz frankly, I was really looking forward to to attending the fourth of July event, it would be my first one, and. I didn't intended to come back and spend the weekend uh at town hall through using my camper and stuff, cuz I really wanted to be part of this. The same time I've had discussions with with Seth and Scott and Rich. There's a real lot of concern about the safety of residents with COVID nineteen, well, we're in better position we ever been. Having thousands of people with no ability to control them within the six feet is is a real concern of everybody, so I understand that. Scott is here, I I I'm sorry, Scott is here to talk about it. Um and I guess I would ask Mr. Chairman if we let Scott kind of express the thoughts of the three of them, I know that Rich, Scott and Seth have all been discussing this and. Are on the same page with that, so if it's okay, like Scott kind of elaborate their thoughts. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Uh yeah, Scott, if you're there, if you're willing, um go ahead, sir.
Yep, yeah, so, and I mean, I don't even know if it's a a health issue anymore. So as of uh May twenty-ninth, CDC and and the state, you know, that after the CDC made their rules, the state came down. And they said that um any street festivals would have to be only fifty percent of previous years. Um and not until August first does that go up to a hundred percent, again, depending on. You know, everything stays true and um the numbers come down, so if we're talking true July fourth, fifty percent of previous years. I know previous years, we've had anywhere from, I guess, eight to thirteen thousand, so now you're talking, you're taking that number down to four thousand. And as um as the chairman had said, you're now the only town possibly in all of central Mass that's having any type of. Whether it be fireworks or parade, um so first you're limiting your your own citizens to four thousand people. And then you're limiting anybody else who ends up showing up or comes, you know, so there there there's almost no way. To get to that number of fifty percent, um and then then it.
There's no way to enforce that either, Scott, like how?
No, no, not at all, e- exactly, e- exactly, I mean, so it's it's one of those things that, you know. It's 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 almost an impossible task to do, um and it 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 would end up falling on. I guess the 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 fourth uh July group or or maybe even, you know, the 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 police or 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 what have you is. It it you can't, you know, it's not like you can, you know, sell tickets or or limit people to to, you know, a sign up sheet or something like that. It it that would be just, you know, out of control, so that's our biggest fear, um you know, it it's, yes, there there's an health. Worry as well, but I just think the fear of not being able to follow the state guidelines and, you know, causing a distraction and. You know, next thing you know, we've got, you know, twenty-five to thirty thousand people sitting here, either watching the parade or for um. You know, the the fireworks and, you know, i- i- it's a, you know, it's it's a huge ordeal.
Thanks.
Um, but you know, and if I can add, and, you know, I I I hate to sound like, you know, you know, oh, the the. You know, the Grinch and all that, but I mean, I think there are some normal fourth of July weekend festivity things that still could be done. Um I mean, I I I'd love to have, you know, that group come to us and get approval, but I mean, I think things where you can limit it to a sign up sheet. Um again, I I'm just like the 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 doll um in bike parade. Limit it to twenty people, that can be done, something like that can be done, but the 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 two big pieces, or maybe even three, if you wanna include the. The band concert, I mean, those, there are no way to um limit people getting on, especially cuz they're outdoor. You know, possibly on the common or i- you know, in Memorial Field or on Main Street, it's just, it is uh, it's it's something that's. Is a tough overhaul to do.
Yeah, there's also the um potential that if, depending on what happens with the budget at town meeting. Um if you had that many people, you're gonna require a pretty robust police detail. Of which we currently cannot afford, uh so it would have to come out of somebody's funding uh for that detail. Um but thank you for updating the the board, Scott, I appreciate it. Jeff, you have your hand up?
I I do, and through the chair, question for the board of health, um. We recently had the townwide yard sale that had a large population of people in there, are there, were there any? Was any data or anything that came result to the townwide yard sale, of any consequences of having that open forum?
Um you 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 mean as far as um cases coming from it, or just? Uh no, we're we're pretty much what, ten days out from that day, and you know, no, we're we're in single digits actually. Uh I know Ron mentioned twelve, we're actually down to eight today and uh uh down to seven as of tomorrow, nothing on that, um. The 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 biggest difference, though, that isn't classified under as a street festival. So, you know, there were no true state regulations on that, where, you know, the parade. And and I guess, you know, the parade more than anything is a is a true street festival, so that's where that gets covered under the the fifty percent state regulations.
Thank you, um I was just wondering if um, I know it ultimately falls to the select board, but I was wondering if there was any conversation with the fourth of July committee. I, like I said, I know, I mean, so much what Jeff said, I know they've done a lot of work with the, I'm telling you, town wide yard sale, and. I think we're trying to improve communication between boards and commissions and groups and everything, so um I totally understand. All the concerns and everything, and I'm not on that on the fence as far as that, but I just would like to have that conversation with the fourth of July committee, so. Um it's a little bit more of a cohesive thing than a a an authoritarian. This is what we're definitely doing without any sense of your input. Obviously, we need to take into consideration all of what Scott said and everything, but um I would just have that. Know if the fourth of July committee has been looped in at all, that even we were potentially considering it.
Thank you.
So I I I can tell you that they have not come to us yet, and I I I don't know if, again, that they're, this the decision is kind of in their ball. You know, ball court, if they wanna do something to go forward, then come to us, um and we have not reached out to them, just cuz. We're you 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 know, we're kind of waiting to see if they do ask, you know, and again, there there may be a decision to. To postpone or hold off or, you know, wait till next year, so we haven't, they have not come to us yet.
Jeff.
Uh following up on what Scott just said, um it's it's as an option, instead of canceling the fourth, a postponement. Um instead of July fourth and August fourth, we would be in a much more comfortable position in August. People would understand.
I mean, my view of it is, look, we have the three hundredth coming up next year, um I think everybody's kind of tired from this year. In this, obviously, this pandemic. I would just as rather make next year's event extra special to celebrate everything. Um versus kind of risking it this year, I mean, I I can certainly understand if there wants to be some concerts or a. You know, like the kid activities, the the bike parade and the, you know, the lip syncing and stuff like that, but. Uh it's just impossible to to control a crowd of that size at the um parade. Or fireworks and meet any of the guidelines that the state has set out for us to meet. I know we had talked last year, Jeff, you had also made the same recommendation about postponing, because at that point, we didn't know this was gonna carry on. This long, we're with, we're still in fourteen days to slow the spread, right, um so. And it's too early to to tell on that, but. Anybody else from the board? Have anything? Jeff.
Um, following up on what you just said, Mitch, I think certainly the fireworks would be uncontrollable. And, you know, truth be told, we're entertaining other town communities uh here, not so much our residents in there. Maybe perhaps we could set up, I mean, as today, we're at May Thursday, the drop dead date decision for. Deciding if this goes forward or could it be stepped back, I mean, everything's developing by the week, the CDC just lifted uh the outdoor mask requirements. This week, is this something that could perhaps be carefully tabled for the next meeting or the meeting after that for a uh. A drop dead date to make that decision on the parade, I I certainly wouldn't argue on the fireworks, I don't think that's controlable. The parade, uh. Perhaps more so, especially if it's in line with what we, I mean, we had a big crowd on the uh townwide yard sale in there, and if there were any ramifications or. Or anything like that, I would.
Uh we did receive quite a few complaints about the townwide yards, but um.
We did?
Yes.
I haven't heard any.
Understood, that being said, uh I think the earlier we make the decision, uh the better. Um it gives everyone time to plan, and the fact that most other communities have canceled their activities already. Isn't gonna change, so whatever we do, we're gonna be the only community doing it, and you're gonna attract a lot more people than you normally would. And that's that's the fear here, um again, it's not our residents, it's. It's thirty thousand people show up for an event, and then we become the poster child of what you're not supposed to do in the state.
Lastly, um we ju- just for the record, get the formal formal recommendation from the board of health on this issue.
Well, we've already, I've already submitted a letter.
Yep, give us the executive summary of it.
Scott, I'm gonna just read it, I can read it.
Yeah, perfect.
Alright, uh I'm reaching out to you with my concerns about the annual fourth of July festivities, as it stands today, the governor's order for street festivals is. Starting May twenty-ninth, fifty percent of previous capacity and not until August first, can it be one hundred? With the possibility of Rutland being the only area town having both a parade and fireworks, there is no way we could even expect to hold attendance to fifty percent. Uh with that being said, I recommend we forego fourth of July festivities this year. And I believe, um you know, I know that Scott, you had already probably talked to Seth about it, I had reached out to Seth about it. When communities started canceling, it was kind of a, I know you folks didn't take that decision lightly, and I know that you you really talked it through with each other. So I certainly appreciate that.
Yeah, and we actually waited, um cuz we knew uh the governor was going to uh change his um. A- all the attendance figures and all that, as of, I believe it was last Tuesday, he made the announcement, so we kind of waited. To hear his latest and greatest numbers, um and then once it came down on that way, then we, that's kind of when we finalize our decision.
I mean, I I just wish that we would have invited the fourth of July committee onto this meeting, knowing that it was on the agenda item and. Extended that invite out to them if they wanted to be here to participate in that conversation specifically. Um rather than just seeing if anybody shows up, that's my comment.
The chair was invited. So.
Okay, thanks for that clarification then.
Who do you want through the chair, do you want a motion to cancel?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like the board to come to a decision, and the board of health, um it's, we have to make a decision on it, so. Was that a motion skip?
Yeah, that's what I said, if it's the motion you want, I make it, I will make it, to cancel the fourth of July parade till next year.
Make a second based on recommendations of the board of health and state requirements.
Yeah.
We have clarification that it's not only the parade, but it's the fireworks and um any specific um. Events, the fourth of July committee with um can work with the board of health um to see what events can continue.
So, Clark, uh Mr. Clark, would you like to amend your motion to reflect Leah's comments?
I would like, I will amend my motion to the parade and the fourth of July fireworks. And do, and allow the fourth of July committee to do any and all other items that the. Board of Health says they may do.
Thanks, Chris, thanks, London.
The motion is a second, uh Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna comment, cuz I I I think it's important, this is obviously a very, very important event for the people of town. And and since I got, just before I took this chat interview, this was made clear to me just how important this is. And and what a great event that the town Rutland puts on for not only our town, but for the whole area. So I just wanna make it clear, and I know you guys all feel this way, cuz I've talked to all of you in different aspects about this. Uh that this is not something that that we want to do, that that uh in any way, um. uh, that this is not something that that we want to do, that that uh in any way, um, something that we feel good about because quite frankly, all of us would love to do this event. I had planned on coming back for vacation for the whole purpose of being at this event because I think it's, it's an event that makes you feel good about the community and and it really uh signifies what this town is made up of. So I just want to make it clear for the record that, well, uh, selectmen may vote for this, that that they're voting for it only for the the utmost protection of the people of Rutland and the people of the area in terms of COVID nineteen. And that in no way does anyone want to cancel these events. It's just something that seems has to be done in light of the state regulations around COVID nineteen.
Yeah, I think to echo Ron's point, uh, there are a few things we do that really make this community special. And make it stand out from other communities in Central Mass and the Fourth of July is obviously one of them. Um, you know, the Festival of Trees, those those things that really make this community what it is. This is obviously not something I think anybody here wants to do, uh, and that goes without saying. And then, you know, we're going to be deprived of a uh another Jeff Stillings float, uh, that's two years in a row now. Um, a lot of people put a lot of effort into this stuff, into the parade and, um, Fourth of July communities worked really hard. And, um, you know, it's 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 not a position we want to be in. Uh, Jeff, I see your hand up.
Uh, lastly, with the discussion, uh, are we sure that there are no other communities? At least in our vicinity, there are no other communities um having Fourth of July celebrations, are we sure?
I don't know if there are no other communities. Um, it's just a lot of the other communities around the forty five belts coming heading west towards Wiltshire have canceled. Um, some for health reasons and some for the reason that Scott pointed out is that there's no way to adhere to the state guidelines, um, if you hold the event. I mean, it it becomes very difficult. Scott, I don't know if, you probably know more extensively, um, in dealing with your calls with the state every day, you know, how many folks are canceling and stuff like that, uh, but it's just, it seems like communities are, have already made these decisions.
Yeah, uh, we, I have yet to hear back from any community that they are going for, let's put it that way. Um, uh, just, you know, we're hearing most everybody has has just flat out canceled or not even postponed, has just flat out canceled for this year. Um, again, you know, if if I hear of one, I'd be more than, you know, happy to let you guys know. But it's, uh, and and it's mostly all the 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 community that I think if I'm hearing anything in the state, it may be somewhere there are more, um, you know, it's people are not in a in a a a specific area to watch, you know, where and I'm just make, you know, like like the esplanade or something like that where, you know, people can see it from all over and they don't have any uh meeting places or any viewing grounds. But as of right now, I'm hearing nothing at all in Central Mass.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing that, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
So I'm going to abstain. Um, I'll admit that I have a bias.
Whitman.
Whitman, I with regrets and thanks to the Board of Health and everyone because I know it's not an easy job. And so I appreciate everyone's work. Thank you.
And Nichols?
Nichols with regrets.
Clark?
Clark with regrets.
And Recity, I with regrets and obviously thank you as well to the Fourth of July Committee. It's been a rough couple of years. And we're hoping that we can put something together special for next year and um support them in any way we can, so. All right, uh, moving on.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The uh concerts in the common in August you uh tabled to this agenda item.
That's right.
Would that also be affected, obviously?
I, no, I think, um, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but um August gives us additional uh capacity in terms of venue for crowds.
Yep, uh, unless there is a a major uptick, August, everything is back to one hundred percent, um, as of August first. So, yeah, that that and when you were mentioning that, I was thinking that exact same thing. That was perfect timing. You know, again, bear barring any uh major upticks in numbers or uh, you know, positive cases around the state. Yeah, August first, hundred percent.
So I think, uh, Jeff, what we can do is if the three hundred committee can go back and work with uh the Board of Health and just submit a plan, and then maybe if we want to bring it back to the board, we can vote, have it on the uh, an item on the agenda and vote to let you move forward on it, um, once you have the blessing from from Scott, uh, and Rich. Uh, London, you have your hand up and then Jeff.
Just as you had mentioned before, too, just uh proceeding with caution depending on the outcome of the budget and resources and fire and DPW.
We'll know by next week, so, um, Jeff, go ahead.
And also echoing on that, that we're talking, you know, less than a two hundred on the concerts as opposed to eight thousand. So there there are two different uh events. As far as the plan, I would submit that I basically told you, uh, the extent of any plan would be family concerts Friday nights.
Yep.
Open forum on the common.
Thank you. Great. Um, okay, so Jeff, does that satisfy your, are you all set? Bring something back?
Uh, if you could put me on the agenda for, uh, yeah, the next meeting, Leah. Thanks, because we are meeting on on Wednesday, uh, with the fourth committee, so we'll be able to be better enlightened. Thank you.
Okay. Um. All right, so going back to, um, uh, one thirty-three.
Mr. Chairman, am I, this is sorry, sorry to interrupt. This is Scott. Uh, am I needed? I I know I wanted to stay on for the the Fourth of July piece, um, I mean, excuse me, for the uh, um, for the August, uh, possible concert piece. Do you need me anymore?
Uh, you're not needed, but you're always welcome, Scott.
Okay, okay, I'll I'll be listening in the background, but, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, we'll go back to now, since we're done with that. I think now people understand why I decided to make that decision to do the vacation, just stay out another week in that respect. I guess they guess, or if you give me just the month of July to utilize that final week, uh, that would be good. And as of right now, my intention is just to extend another week from the week that I'm already going in June. Um, but that's why I, you know, I didn't know for sure what you guys were going to do until tonight. That's why I didn't give you a decision. I don't want to do, I don't want to take that vacation time in June because as Leah and I think all you guys are concerned about during June is when I expect we come to resolution on a budget. We can't do it during May, the 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 May thing, I'd like to think we can finish it by June. So I don't want to take a vacation in the middle of that if, God forbid, we have a uh a needed extra special meeting or something as a result of what happens with the budget. That's why I think July makes more sense.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with it. Uh, London, uh, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick question on how that works as far as funding out of the budget from one year to the next.
Yeah, he says I'm taking.
Credit that back.
Yeah, so I'm taking vacation pay, just instead of salary, I get vacation pay, so it doesn't, shouldn't impact the budget whatsoever.
Anybody else have any opinions on it? Are you looking for a vote, Ron, or a motion?
Yeah, I think you did. I I guess I'd comment to this, Mr. Chairman, only because, you know, and I kind of did, was doing it under town administrator correspondence. And again, I know how it goes. I don't know if it's the best possible way is probably to add the to the agenda because we didn't, obviously, we didn't know about it in advance because we had to have the decision set up for the July. So I think I'd do a motion to add the discussion of administrator's vacation and then a formal vote.
All right, I'll make the motion to add it as a agenda item for discussion.
Oh, second.
All right, motion and second for the discussion about the adding the agenda item. Hearing that, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
On's I.
Nichols?
On's I.
Whitman?
Whitman, I.
Clark?
I.
City, I, motion carries unanimous. Okay, does any uh other member of the board have any comments or uh concerns or are we okay moving forward? Um, if so, I'll entertain a motion to allow Ron thirty days of flexibility to use his contractual vacation time.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'll have a roll call vote. There's no further discussion. Stillings?
Stillings I.
Whitman?
Whitman, I.
Nichols?
I.
Clark?
I.
And Recity, I, motion carries unanimous. Okay, so moving on, uh, this came up last meeting or uh when Ron was on vacation. Um, I think Leah, you had brought it up, uh, Ron is contractually due a six-month review, which is, I believe, this week or last week was his official six-month date. Uh, so we got to go ahead and get that out of the way. Um, if everyone is amenable to it, we had forms that we use specifically for TA Nicholson uh that we can use for this review process. If everyone was happy with how that process had played out when we did it for Mike, um, it was pretty comprehensive. We all got a chance to discuss it, um, and we got them to the TA prior to the meeting for his chance to to review. Uh, was everyone amenable to that process?
We're sure.
No.
Uh, Ron?
Sure, I I haven't even seen the document you're talking about. Uh, in our last conversation, in our last conversation, you know, I I giving you guys a form because the final evaluation is based on the overall goals and objectives that we work together to establish. And some of the selectmen were having a hard time because, you know, we hadn't even started working on the budget yet and there was budget questions on that review. And then, as I recall it, there was some discussion saying, yeah, that form doesn't work. That's our final form at the end of the year after you look at all the goals and objectives and match it up. But it was kind of my understanding from our last discussion, it was going to be more of a general discussion among selectmen and me as to what they thought and what advice they would give for improvement or, you know, concerns they had. Not so much your form, but I I have not seen Michael's form, so I don't know if that's relevant to our discussion or not.
Jeff, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say I had no objection you uh you had asked.
All right, you know, pull up that form. It was a standard review form of Ron, um, that we adopted from other communities. I don't think it's anything that's outside of the boilerplate. Uh, Leah, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just, if, well, I didn't want to interrupt you, Mitch, if you're done. I was just going to say, um, in my, for the three-month review, kind of, I was very clear in my comments that this was not something, three months in, this was not something that we could reasonably, I could reasonably expect someone to have covered. Um, and that the these were kind of my hopes and goals going forward for the next nine months towards, working towards the end of year, kind of. Um, that's how my comments were, so I don't necessarily think that, um, it's detrimental to have kind of the end document that we're still working towards those goals. This is kind of things I would like to see to get there or whatever. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, though.
London?
Yeah, I I agree with Leah because the way that any kind of performance I've ever been involved in, uh, you have goals and you always have a review to say, okay, you know, what, where have you, what have you achieved? What do you need to achieve so that you know, um, what the expectations is by the end of your your year? So that's, that's common practice as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think, so I just pulled up the goals that we, the the topics that we discussed um, for our one formal review we had, uh, with Mike. And we had a similar issue where, um, there weren't specifically, uh, goals that were set. Obviously, this year everyone's been, um, trying to put out fires. Uh, there were five. It was fiscal management and budgeting, which again is a pretty standard, um, criteria for a town administrator. Um, interdepartmental synergy and resource connectivity, improving skills communications, community outreach and constituent services. Um, diversification of revenue, including public-private partnerships and grants, uh, being received. And then, um, placed goals and new initiatives. Uh, and those were broad, uh, because I know that each one of us had different things that we were looking to to kind of address. So those were the five criteria. Um, because those are broad and that those are simple functions of a TA and this is a six-month review. Um, I'm fine with keeping the goals similar to what those would be. Um, because those are really your your fundamental pillars when it comes to fiscal management and, you know, department head communications and things like that. Um, if we wanted to set aside some time as a board at our next meeting to place goals that we would be then be reviewing Ron on, we could push the review back into June and do it that way with the goals that the board sets. Or we could keep these five goals and use that standardized form that we had come up with, uh, last year to be able to provide some input. If Ron is agreeable to it. Uh, Leah, you have your hand up.
My only comment is, as far as, um, doing goal setting and then a review, um, is that the board may change, will change definitely, um, by the next meeting, I think. So, um, it's kind of a little bit of an unfair moving target, um, to have the review. I agree with the goal setting for the new board and working as a new board with the TA and everything to do some goal setting. But as far as the past six-month review, I think that that's difficult because it's this board, in my personal opinion, that would be able to pride the, provide the best review from the previous six months.
Understood, and that's why I think I just kind of proposed using those same baseline criterion. Um, because we did not, as a board, specifically set, uh, individual goals. I think we've been trying to, as a board, manage this crisis situation, numerous crisis situations over the course of the year. And we had a lot of transition in that office between Mike leaving, having an interim, and then Ron being on boarded. So I agree with you, Leah, that to set goals now would seem absurd. And then to have to retroactively grade Ron on those goals, it wouldn't be fair to the employee. Um, so if we're okay with those pillars, um, and just to provide like a six-month check-in based on that, which, I mean, those are all things that are included in the position posting. So it's all something that we evaluated Ron in the hiring process, too. So there's no surprises in there, but, um, I just want to present that as a, to the board as an option because I think it addresses Leah's concerns of, we're not weighing him on individual goals that we might have had as select board members, but we are simply grading him on his performance in his job as as outlined in the job description. London?
Yeah, and I think those areas are all pretty broad anyway and they all should be in line with his contract. Uh, I don't think there's any like specific goals, like you'll get so many dollars of grant funds or certain numbers or or specifics. So I think they're broad enough that the expectation as a manager or administrator, um, you know, the, you you would expect somebody to be able to to address those specific goals.
Yeah, and I think the conversations we had at the onset of all of this, uh, when Ron was being on boarded was, we wanted, and Ron agreed to this, um, we wanted that constant check-in for feedback. The idea is not to, you know, necessarily ping somebody. It's so that if there are issues, you know, Ron recognizes those right away and and is able to address them. Um, so I think allowing us the broad range ability to do that is good. And to Leah's point, uh, this board would be the most appropriate to review Ron over the last six months, which is why at the last meeting, um, Ron wasn't here, but I proposed, uh, allowing, uh, Jeff and Leah to submit their review materials and then present those as they see fit in front of our board, um, knowing that, you know, certainly Jeff is retiring from this board. Um, but, you know, I'd love to have him come back in and present that review, uh, to make sure that his input's heard, um, even if he's not acting in an official capacity at that point.
Appreciate it.
Does that make sense with everyone? Ron, does that make sense for you? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I I I guess I I don't, if if I, if I'm following what you're saying as a chairman, you're referring to a very general document that you guys did with Mike. I haven't seen it, so I I I, listen, I trust the board, so I'm not overly concerned about it, to be honest with you. And I am, you're right, I'm looking for positive feedback. What I, what I really do hate is when everybody seems to be really, really happy and at the 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 last minute in the annual review, all of a sudden they get bombed and they, and nobody even suggested there's a problem. So I like having that feedback. Um, you know, we did establish goals and objectives that will be the final evaluation because that's what we agreed upon back when I first started setting up those goals and objectives. So at the end, the last of the meeting, we're going to kind of go to those. But I I trust that the board is is going to be fine and review me fairly, so whatever you guys do, I'm not overly worried about it, you know?
Okay, so I can distribute this form or the form that we had used, uh, both to Ron and the board, um, this week. If everyone's in agreement to you in, using the form, and if Ron has no objections, um, we can set a review meeting date. I would propose that by the next meeting, we have given Ron everything in writing and then that'll give him two weeks to the following meeting, um, to process the information. And we can have that public review process, um, which would be a, on the thirty-first. Is that amenable to the board?
Yep, to me it is. Sounds reasonable.
Okay. All right, anyone have any further discussions, excuse me, about the, uh, the review meeting and review process? Ron, we can talk this week, um. Do you have a document you'd rather use, or, uh, whatever? Uh, we'll get it taken care of in a square way and make sure the board's happy with it and go from there. Okay, um, moving on, uh, last item, uh, under new business is the flag policy. Uh, Linda, I think you requested this be put on as an agenda item, um, for discussion.
Yeah, I've, I've had a lot of concerns over not only the, uh, the, the managing of the flags, but the condition of the flags in town. Um, I, it, it's my understanding that if there's a flag pole on town property, it's our responsibility. Um, so if the president and or the, the governor, uh, distributes an executive order to have it at, at half staff. Then that's, uh, what we will be doing. Um, I know that in, on the last one, um, when the vice president had passed away. Um, there was no consistency. There was one flag in front of the town hall, which is shredding. Main flag, um, on the common, which is the most prominent flag, was at full staff. Um, there's no flag pole on the library pole, and there's no flag, and, uh, there's no flag. Um, on the pole at the community center, which is bent and in disrepair, and there's a flag at the old fire station. Like I said, there's gotta be some consistency. If, if, for example, if, um, there's, uh, the executive order from the president and the governor. To have it at half staff, um, in many of those lost to COVID for three days. Um, that main flag in the common was at full staff while we were running a clinic, um, estate. And I found it embarrassing to have people passing the flag pole when we weren't showing the respect that should have been shown. Um, as we said, the Fourth of July is very big in this town, um, so I would think that we would manage our flags better, more responsibly.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board have any comments?
Who's responsible for maintaining and seeing that this is all done?
The, through you, Mr. Chairman, um, generally what happens when I see something from the state. Or, and sometimes from Lyndon reminding me what's going on, I've been kind of talking to Joe about it. And Joe's been trying to manage staff to be able to adjust the flags accordingly. Um, truthfully, I'm not sure which buildings have to have the flags up and down. I'll, I'll ask Joe if he wants to comment. I know he's been regularly working on this and. Uh, with staff, I know there's. As well, so Joe, if you, if you might kind of give us the practice.
Um, more often than not, we get the, uh, announcement from the office of the town administrator, and then we, we make, um. Do what we can to get the flag adjusted as needed. I, I do have one question, though, if, if it's all right, can I speak directly to, um, selectmen Nichols? Um, I, I go through and read those, um, announcements pretty diligently when I finally do get them, and it's not uncommon to see. Only the central administration building, not all flags. That seems to be a change over the last year or so.
Well, I mean, and all, all other towns, they're all at half staff. The bank in town is at half staff, many residents.
No, I'm just saying, we make every effort to.
In my opinion, if it's a town pole, it should be abiding by the executive order.
And I, again, I'm, I'm, the only thing I have concern with it, is it possible that someone re, because they have changed over the last year or so? The way they're written out and how they're described has changed, so it's not uncommon to see just the central administration building. Um, but we can talk about lowering all flags when we get that announcement. It's not a big deal.
I, I, when I see the executive order, they say all, all flags at half staff. I don't see any specification that would be only on. Specific buildings. All, all people, including residents, but obviously we cannot, you know, cannot.
If it would help, like, I can try and get a couple of the most recent, uh, um, announcements we've gotten from the governor, and they, they do have some s- specifics in them. This year that were uncommon to years previous. Um, back to a couple of the other comments, um, we have started updating the flags where we found them to be weaker and poor condition. Um, I don't have an update on the library flag, and the flag pole at the community center is gonna have to be taken down. It's no longer structurally sound. Any other that can answer? I've wanted to make to my earlier statement, oftentimes I'll work together with Chief Knight to get someone to either lower or raise a flag at sunset. Because the flags, uh, we don't have staff to do that work.
One of the questions, Linda, too, was, do we use overtime to bring people in to, to change the flags or not, so. Truthfully, we're kind of luck, and that's why we've asked the fire chief, because his staff is on board to try to do it for us. So we don't have to bring a DPW worker in at overtime to try to deal with it, but.
I, I would think that you'd be able to do that on regular hours. I, I don't see how that could be overtime. And it does not take that amount of time, so I, I, I don't think that's sufficient.
Say that again, regarding the overtime, I'm just, I wanna clarify that if, if you don't mind.
I think that you could do that during regular working hours. I don't think you need to do overtime to put in, in, raise and, and bring flags down.
I, I, with all due respect, I'm gonna disagree, because oftentimes it says they have to go back up at sunset, and that can be two or three hours before, after our staff has gone home.
I, I just wanted to, uh, opine that at the townwide yards here, we had noticed that the, the flag on the lower common had split. Based on the, you know, the strong windstorms we had, so I shot a, uh, a quick email to. Ron and Director Buckley, and I just wanna report publicly, and it was immediately addressed. Immediately addressed, uh, by both of them. They, uh, they did it once it was brought to their attention, so, uh. You know, I, I understand the big, big issues in replacing is cost of the flags, but, uh. My experience has been that, you know, if you bring it to their attention, uh, they do it. Also in the past. I forget what the event was, but, uh, we were able to ask the PD to lower the, oh, it was for, uh, great Trappazonian. Uh, Trapper, the officer who had passed during the COVID, uh, the PD went out there and did it. So maybe, you know, that, that could be under the, the TA's responsibilities. To have a contingency plan on people who know how to respectfully lower and raise, uh, you know, maybe. Talk to the fire chief or the police chief to do that. I think we have like five town flag poles. Anyways, no complaints. Thank you.
It just, to Joe's credit, he's been, you know, and listen, I don't disagree that sometimes we make mistakes, so I think Lynn is probably corrected. Sometimes we just. Aren't getting to it like we should. We should try to do better, but I, I, I do know that Joe, whenever I send him an email, tries to be very responsive to. To the email I send him, uh, and he's been working with the fire chief to help him, so that we can get the flags down appropriate, but I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna ever say that we're perfect at this, and we definitely could use some improvement, and we'll try to improve it and make it better, but it, it, it's sometimes. Even our staffing, it can be a little difficult, that's all.
Um, not to add work, but is there a list of the, um. Town property flag poles, because I don't think the banks are necessarily like town property, so those would be the private. Um, I don't know about the cemetery. I'm just trying to think when we've done the, um, Memorial Day parades and everything. Which ones we tried to focus on, which ones might be private, which ones are definitely one hundred percent town owned, and then maybe we can come up with a plan. Um, working with the TA or something as far as, you know, a flag committee or something. I don't know what it would look like, but. Um, folks that are around that can, can do that work also.
Joe, how many flags are there actually on town property?
I don't have a list handy. I didn't bring one tonight. Um, I just looked at the most common ones. Um, we have one on Prescott. We have one on Memorial, actually a second one on Memorial behind the woodhouse. Um, one on the common, uh, by the library, one in front of, um. Community, the community center, um, one in front of community hall and one at DPW. Police and fire seem to take care of their own flag with some regularity, but they can lag behind on some of the announcements as well. So half a dozen.
I was just, whenever you get somebody like the Boy Scouts to get involved in some of that, I don't know, I'm trying to think of Leah's thoughts. Is there some other groups we may be able to engage to help us with that, so that we don't have to worry about it as much, but. Maybe get one group to take care of each pole, but then you gotta email a lot to each group whenever it comes, because I know that the. Directive does come to my office when I send it out to Joe, so. All right, well, we'll have to, if you don't mind, Linda, we'll, we'll try to work and improve, okay? And we'll, we'll, uh, let you know what we're gonna do to try to improve, if that's okay.
Right, thank you.
So we'll work together and see if we can come up with some kind of better plan or get some people involved. I, I'm not sure off the top of my head, I know what the answer is, but we'll work on it. I think Linda's right that we need to do better, so we'll, we'll figure out what we gotta do.
No, I agree. There's always room for improvement.
Thank you. Moving on, uh, correspondence, we have, uh, two items. Uh, is the community compact program letter just the award letter, Ron?
Yeah, no, it's not even an award letter. It's just a thank you, congratulations, you did a great job with the licensing, and that one is closed. So that's not, that's done from before Mike was here. Uh, the town planner worked with everybody to get that e-licensing system up, that project's complete, and it was just a congratulation letter by the, um, Lieutenant Governor.
Okay, great, and then, uh, we have correspondence from TP Law regarding the state police reform legislation.
This is a little bit more complicated. I actually had quite the conversation with the police chief today. As you know, this is a kind of a national issue, but in Massachusetts, the governor created a process, um. Identifying police officers that might have significant discipline, prob, problems, and he created a whole new. A board that isn't even up and running yet, but, um, you know. This is one of those items where frankly, it's frustrating because there's a lot of, I, I'm gonna say my own personal opinion. I think our police officers do a great job. And there's always a few bad apples that make everything bad for everybody else, and I, I read the reform things that they brought forward today. Some of them make a lot of sense. Some of them I think are, uh, just makes things very complicated for small police forces that. That don't have the kind of problems that maybe some bigger urban departments have, but the chief is, to the police chief's credit, he's very aware of the reform legislation. Uh, he's getting ready to present information, but the board who's supposed to do all of this oversight isn't even standing up yet. So this is gonna be a, I think, a kind of drawn out process to get this reform legislation up and running and to make this. Um, clear, but there, there's so many things in this reform process that are undecided. For instance. They wanna create a database of all police officers who have disciplinary problems, and they say, well, some of that's gonna be public, but they don't know what's gonna be public and what's not gonna be public. And that's concerning, because if an officer gets a complaint, you know, complaint's different from a fact. And, and, you know, something that actually happened, and that stuff, a lot of concern about police officers, that stuff's gonna be public based upon. Somebody making a complaint about police officers. Now, I think we all know that, you know, somebody gets pulled over for a ticket. Very unhappy, sometimes they, or, or their family member gets arrested for drugs. Sometimes people make complaints that have no merit, but. It's their way of fighting against the charges they're being charged for, so the very, I just wanna say it's a very complex issue. Uh, I'm proud of the work, the work, and the chief is getting ready for it, but, um, I think the state has a lot of work to do with clarifying how this is all gonna work. Um, and it, it's sad that I think it's gonna result in a big bureaucracy, and I hope it actually achieves the goals that it's set out to achieve. That's all I have on that item, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jeff, you have your hand up?
Uh, thank you. Piggybacking on that, uh, yes, it may be a complicated issue, but, you know. Speaking as the Rutland Select Board overseeing the Rutland Police Department, we have no bad apples on the Rutland PD. And the Rutland Police Department need no reform. That being said, i- i- as far, as far as this relates to our PD, uh, we should continue to offer nothing but support for the, yeah, good job.
Any further discussion from the board? I know that we had voiced our, uh, concerns about some of this prior, uh, we found out that the MMA was lobbying. On the town's behalf. There were a lot of communities that followed suit after we led the charge on that. Um, it's just, I wanna express again my personal disappointment that the communities were not involved with any of these decisions. Um, you know, because as Jeff had said, you have a lot of, uh, smaller departments that are very well run. Um, each community is different, and it, uh, it paints everybody with broad brush, and it just, it's upsetting that we did not get the chance. To weigh in, uh, as a community, other than, um. Through voicing our concern that the MMA was acting on our behalf without our permission, so. That's all I got. But thank you, Ron, for bringing that to attention. Um, Jeff, you have your hand up, and then we'll, I think we have an executive session we have to go into.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we still on the, uh, agenda item of correspondence?
Yes.
Um, I do believe that maybe Beth or Ron may, uh, have sent it out. We got some correspondence from our, uh. Sister Board over in Barry on their concurrence with the town of Rutland on the issue of the, uh, the prison camps. Perhaps we can make that public.
Did I, I thought I put that, I asked Beth to put that in the packet. Is it in your packets?
So basically, sorry via email, but I don't, you know, it wasn't an agenda item, but. That is correspondence from my, uh, neighboring board. I would, I would like to see that made public.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We, we emailed you the documents. Basically, it's saying, and let's make it clear in public that the. Border Selectmen in Barry have voted, I believe unanimously, to come out in support of. The existing prison camps, and they don't believe that they should be torn down. Um, so that was the clear position that they felt that that was an important historical, uh, site, and it should be left alone, and they. Sent that to the border side.
Jeff, you all set?
Uh, one, one last. Thing here, I guess. Uh, on that same note, uh, a year ago, uh, we did meet with the Barry, uh. Board of Selectmen on the issue of the DCR gates, uh, being open and accessible to the. Public. Perhaps we could revisit that, because I've had some constituent complaints that the gates are still closed there. It's long past mud season. Um, that was a, an issue that this board aggressively pursued in there, but, uh, it seems to be falling back to the same. Same ways of, uh, limiting access to our public on our state level. Thank you.
Um, I, sorry, this is not necessarily correspondence, so it was just a couple of things, um. Before we go into executive session, I just wanted to ask, or whatever.
Regarding an agenda item or?
No, so one is, I just wanna, i- if I can say what they are. One is just the master plan, um, steering committee has the survey live. Um, as of this weekend, so I wasn't sure when it was gonna go live. That's why I didn't ask for it to be a, um, agenda item specifically. For anybody that's watching, it's master plan, uh, rutlandmasterplan.com. It surveys live. Um, and then the other question, I've had some questions about the LED town sign, um, and just what the status of that is.
I think, okay, so the LED town sign, we've all heard, um, people have been checking in on it, because it was approved last year. Um, just to provide an update and not deliberate, because it's not an agenda item, um, the sign, I believe the vendor was picked. Um, it is Serrato signs out of Worcester. Um, the sign has been ordered. Uh, the location that was originally proposed for the sign presented a challenge. Because it is on top of a large water main that provides water to about a third of the town. And so Director, it's my understanding, Director Buckley, um, the chief and Ron. Are all working to come up with a location that meets everybody's needs, but doesn't present any infrastructure problems for installation, so. It's my understanding, Ron, that this could be figured out and that sign could be installed within the next three, four weeks. Is that?
Yeah, I, I hope sooner than that, because they're ready to install the sign. I had met with Neil and, um. I think the fire chief back about a week and a half ago, and, and that was a whole conversation about that water line. That's why Neil was at it. Uh, I made a suggestion, because y- you need to get the sign closer to the road so people can see it, and of course, that's where that water line is, right? So, so I made a suggestion, um, and then I hadn't heard anything back, so I, I talked to Joe. And asked Joe to look into it, um, and Joe was, was gonna look at where else or how else we could locate it. Um, my suggestion was, we put it closer to the road. Probably have about a foot and a half of the water line would run o, run underneath the sign. I was hoping if it was a construction. Yeah, the back of the sign, like going underneath the sign, getting to it, but Joe, I don't, maybe Joe has a more update on it, but. But the answer is yes, we're working on it, and we're trying to resolve that water lines.
That, I mean, that's all I wa, was just curious, the status of it, um, that's, I wasn't looking for like a huge discussion. Sorry, guys, if it needs to be a bigger discussion, we can put it for a next agenda item, I guess, but.
We're scheduled to dig tomorrow.
There you go.
So we'll be dig, digging the, the footings, uh, tomorrow, and the frame of the concrete should be also put in tomorrow. Uh, unfortunately, um, it's a little more than a third, uh, Mr. Recity, it, it's more like three quarters. It means feeds most of the town.
Okay, so if you, you hit that, that would be bad news for. Okay, so if you, you hit that, that would be bad news for a lot of people.
Yeah, yep, everything, um, yep.
Sprinklers that would go unused, you know, how's that?
So, if I could see you, Mr. Chairman, only because he just said some tomorrow. So is that the site today, as of the fire chief, or is this still gonna allow to be designed close enough to the road? For everybody to see it, Joe?
More than that, but, uh, we do have a plan, uh, it's scheduled. Up to the road for everybody to get, um, we just have to proceed extremely cautious.
Yeah, that's great, okay, Jeff, you have your hand up here.
Uh, real brief, yeah, speaking of footings, just want to say thank you to Joe. And, uh, the men of the, the DPW for doing the, forming the footing. For the Detective John Sanji bench and getting that done, uh, under the last minute, uh, nicely done. Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. I believe we have to, so how are we running this? Peter and Ron. Executive session, because, uh, what we had been doing in prior Zoom meetings, it's using a different Zoom link. I don't think you have to do that, um, but we do have to go into executive session, so we're going to have to adjourn. This meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, for the purposes of going into executive session, only to come out of executive session. With the intent of adjourning.
Oh, the, the question, Mr. Chairman, is you may vote. On the agreement, so I'm not sure if your intention is to. Not vote tonight or vote, that I think that's an option you guys are gonna have to consider after you review the con, the agreement.
No, no, we're just talking about how we go into executive session from this Zoom.
So what I would suggest is this, is that. It would be a motion to go in executive session, inviting in DPW Director Joe Blakely. Um, obviously, it's, discussions on the agenda, uh, to deal with a contractual obligation. Uh, everybody would be asked to leave. I guess in this case, just by nature of it, because Peter's running this. He can see who's in there, and the only people that should be in the meeting are the select people, the.
I, I can also transfer host duties to Tamika, so. That's, that'll clarify that. We're being broadcast live, so that live stream's gonna shut off, right?
It shut off, correct, right. Peter would have to shut that off, if he, just find if he wants to turn it over to Mika. Um, it could still be recorded as long as Tamika's the only one that has access to that recording. Uh, and then at some point, we would go and discuss it with the DP job director, and then we may ask him. To leave the meeting so we can discuss it further. If we need him, we can call him, I can call him and ask him to come back on, but.
Understood, I, I, again, I'm just. I was just asking about the logistics, so.
Mitch, it's Tamika, if I may, um, you guys do have the option to state in your motion that you're going to adjourn. From executive session, because I just think it might make it a little bit difficult if you go back to public just to adjourn, then you've technically gotta reopen it.
We, we went over this before when this whole Zoom nightmare started, in that language, if we throw it in, um. To only reopen with the purpose of adjournment. It covers us, so we don't have to actually. Go back into open session and then separately adjourn. Does that make sense?
So, Mr. Chairman, if that was the case, then. You would take up. The agenda item. Uh, avoiding on the contractual issue at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, is that your thought? An open public session, because that's where it would be, right?
Well, I mean, we could go back into public session, I mean, this is all via Zoom, so maybe we could go back into public session and then make that vote, if we have to do that publicly. In public session, but if we were going into executive session. Only to adjourn after executive session, we just had to use those, those, that certain language. Uh, to cover ourselves in terms of the meeting, um. So, so we're going to go into executive session.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to go into executive session, if you're telling me, Ron. That we're gonna have to come out of executive session, back to public session to vote. That we're gonna have to reopen. Public session to vote and then adjourn again from the public session.
E- either that, Mr. Chairman, or, you know, given the nature of the timing of the contract, it doesn't expire till June thirtieth. We could simply put the public vote. On the contract on the next selectmen's meeting, and that would.
Just, that keeps it easier, let's just do that. Um, so I'll entertain a motion. To adjourn. From public session. Go into executive session. To reconvene only for the purposes of adjournment.
Second. Still in second.
I think you need to explicitly state the reason. I'm sorry, that is correct, I'll amend my motion. Um, we're going into executive session. Uh, for, uh. Open meeting or, uh, reason number two. Uh, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-military personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-military personnel. Jeff, do you amend your second?
Second, sir.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote, there's no further discussion. Uh, Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Uh, Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Recity, aye.